Hey. I think the word is we're on, everybody here, okay? Mr. Manager, do you want to turn it over to Ms. Tanya?
Yep. I'll lead the discussion. Most every one of the department heads, including representatives from the school division, are here. If they have questions for them, they're all here for that purpose.
All right, sir. Great. Ms. Tanya?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to present. Also like to thank everybody for being present tonight. So we can bring this across the table for y'all to review tonight. Oh, went too fast. So, first of all, I'd like to present to you tonight the FY25 requested amounts. Now, look at these numbers, they're really big. Not too scary though, after I go through this. But overall, schools requested about 14 projects totaling $15 million. Public safety, around 2.7 million. We have transportation, which is made of collectively two funding sources. Our state funding, as well as our funding. So when you think of that state funding, that's our street maintenance, that our public works does a great job, unlike others. But our public works absolutely does a great job with our street maintenance. We also have a few requests from public works, our recreation and events divisions. We have other projects that we like to categorize that are both for finance, city hall, and then utilities of about a million. One thing, when you think about utilities, that is revenue supported. So when we think about general fund, general fund does not support the sewer fund for their request. All total, when you add this up, you're looking at about 28.4 million. That's over the five years that the departments are requesting. Of that, 3.9 is state funds, and utilities, another million. When you think about the general fund and the budget that we present to you yearly, our budget for '24 was 38 million. That gives you a comparison of how much projects that they're requesting. This is what we have for the general fund. So tonight, the city manager is bringing forth the planning commission approved CCIP. This was taken to them on January 18th, and they approved it to brought forward to see. So the fun part. The things that we're asking for consideration in '25 from general fund report, now this is just from the general fund, we're looking at bus replacement for the school division, and an additional police vehicle. In our current '24 budget, police has one vehicle for replacement. By allocating this additional 76, this will bring them up to two allocations for '25.
The addition to the two that we've got for the resource officers?
That's correct. Those are done through grant funding. Which, if you noticed a while ago, there were some F-150s standing on the road that they're waiting to be outfitted. They have been outfitted and actually doing their job today. If you looked on whether it was 411 or say what you will, proud to say that they were doing their job today. Debt service. We took into consideration the request of the school division, and understanding that they have, you know, situations that cause them to have to shut the school down, or maybe not. So our request is 2.8 million for high school VAV system. If you go back and look at the pages on 15 and 16, you could do it very ways. You can replace the chiller, you can replace the boiler, you can replace the AC unit. That costs you about $4 million over the life of those three. However, with their suggestion, we are recommending 2.8 for a variable error volume system, but it's more energy efficient. We also recommended a second bus replacement for schools. Now, looking at these recommendations, the question comes, how are we going to fund this? As we're working on our budget, we've come to realize that we have fund balance in the capital project fund to support the one bus of general fund, as well as we're going to look to new avenue for the second police vehicle. For debt, for the two projects, it's a high school VAV and the second bus replacement, we are asking of debt service to fund those. So when I say we're asking, looking at the budget, we're aspiring to a few things. The city manager will not bring to you a tax increase to do these. However, we are going to try to support the debt service additional funding. If you recall, on December 11th, we asked council to use 75,000 of fund balance to help support that, with our hopes that if we have additional new revenue, we can put it into debt service.
Can I just jump in? The other aspect of that in 2025 is that, doesn't have that borrowing be in the second half of the calendar year? And what that means is the money will be available and lined up for the school to do the VA work. It wouldn't be this coming summer, it'd be the summer after the end of FY25. The reason for that is it works better with our debt service. FY26 on the $10,000 if you approve that.
Questioning with the debt service, what we in '29 is a decline in the general fund support, service of about 1.2 million. What we're proposing through these plans of option, issuing debt earlier, so when that 1.2 comes to effect, we've kind of already used it. We're using that decline early. But we're also using it without increasing taxes. As Randy mentioned, with the proposal, we're going to request the funding for debt service in springtime of '25. This will allow the school district, if approved for the debt service, to go out and get the purchasing requirements to secure a contractor to do the work as soon as school lets out, with the hopes of it being finished, so school can start back up. And so with our proposal with all the projects, we're looking about 2.3 million each year, except for '27, because in '28, school has a larger need, therefore, we want to save our debt service until that time. Any questions on this? So, for '26 through '29, here are some of the various projects that the city manager recommends. This will be from general fund support, continuing supporting the replacement of the police vehicles. A new item is the watershed studies. This is where our engineer will get a consultant to look at it, to find out what we need to do in the future, so we can bring future CCIP projects to you. This will help with the drainage and so forth. Additionally, we have the Blue Way system. This has been something that Parks and Rec Division has wanted to get off the, basically off the water, and get canoes into the trackway from our park advisory board. And again, some funding for the Central Park, Two Tree Park, as well as recreational items here at city hall. One of the things we should note, shipwreck island improvement, have been approved for that application, so that'll be in '27. The initial funding is the engineering, of course, just a lonely old Ford F-450 dump For debt service, if you recall my earlier slides, we did 1 million each year, except for '27, we did a million. So you'll see on here for '26, we're recommending for the high school roof to be replaced, as well some gym floor to be resurfaced at the middle school, fire chief vehicles, as well as another dump truck. And if you see in '27, we are recommending for engine one to be replaced. As you can see, it takes probably three years. This will give us time to make sure it's actually here before we need it. And then a few other things in there. One thing to note that I did fail on this slide, it wasn't included on my plan, is the 318 and debt service that we'll need for shipwreck. Lot of projects right there. Is there any questions about the projects presented? February 26th, just to let you know, we'll have a public hearing to actually vote on the CCIP, but now I'll open the floor for questions. Hi?
Yes, there's one. I know that you have the middle school gym floor replaced, and there's also the middle school roof replaced, which is like a year or two after that.
That's high school. Was it the middle school?
I thought they were both middle school. Maybe I'm wrong.
Because the middle school, I mean, that's just been... You got the elementary school gym floor. There might have been a request, not for the, it's going to be the elementary school, because the gym has been completed.
Tonya, not really a question, but this document is well done, and to all of those who put it together, a great job. To me, a discussion with the manager and with you, it looks like to me that what we're doing, which I think is really smart, is taking those items that we absolutely have to have, or some things we can't put off, like a school HVAC system. I mean, that's not something you can put off two, three, or four years. So some of those items in there that you talked about are, we need to address those pretty quickly. Some that you could put off are waiting till 2029, when we have little or maybe no debt service at that time. So that, but much less than what we have now. And it will give the council at that time, you know, the opportunity to probably do some really... I mean, I won't be part of that, but I hope that whoever is part of council will move in that direction. But I see you just kind of filling holes until you get to '29, which I think is smart, well done.
Right, I thank you. If I could, sure. To have what I call that trough in '29, which is a significant drop in debt service, and a feature of this plan that we're presenting is we're going to begin to work with you to begin to spend that now, rather than wait until 2029. The things that they can't wait. Now, there will, it won't be a trough by the time we get to 2029. If you approve this plan, it'll be more of a dip. But between this day and that day, all of these other important things that we need to do will get done in a manner that will not require a tax rate increase and allow us to potentially advance fund these things about four to five years. I think it's a real win for the community, and this was a really Tanya Terra financial strategy. I certainly agree with it.
And to give credit where credit is due, Randy threw this out to us at this point. If we hadn't done the... But we're given an opportunity now to the school division to continue funding and do the projects they've been requesting of us for...
Excuse me, Tanya, can you put up a chart that shows the debt service, debt service chart again? All right, so 20, that's the drop that we're talking about, and that's when we're wanting to look at doing some of these projects?
That's what I refer to as the trough. It's essentially a $1.2 million reduction in debt service if we took no additional debt on between this day and that day. And what we're proposing with the plan is to begin to take on new debt, which will temporarily take us above $4 million, if you approve it, obviously. And that's why we're suggesting salting away one money and other things to temporarily take the top off of that hill, so that by the time we get to 2029, the curve will look similar to flat, but it'll, I think it'll still have a decrease in it, but it won't be quite as pronounced. You're basically using our financial app to advance fund these things four or five years.
Does that include the debt service on the new police fire safety building?
The debt service that you see reflected here is our cumulative debt service, existing. Thank you very much.
The chart helps me look at it.
Help me do.
So, Tanya, I have a question about the TMDL. AR blank, or TBD. How will those fit into this whole, the whole budget?
I'll be pleased to take a shot at it, knowing that Sean is here, and if I get something completely wrong, he'll step forward and fix it. But, you know, the TMDL requirements as part of our Chesapeake Bay participation, when they first came up, were rather extensive on the localities. Like, our number was multiple times the size of our annual budget. Working, but we worked with council and did, it came in three five-year targets. And working with council, the first five years' targets was the smallest. And we worked on a number of projects, like the BMP we have there right here at city hall, and the work that was done on Victory Boulevard, as you turn towards the legacy development, as you take that dog leg. Those are two examples of projects that we did to meet our requirements there. About that time, we were also working regionally with HRSD and their SWIFT program, which is a program to oversimplify, to take groundwater, treat it to better than wastewater, treat it to better than drinking water standards, and reinject neophyse along the way, taking out nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment. So collectively, as a region, we were able to partner with them. And what they're doing meets our obligations for phases two and three. Reason that it remains in our plan is a reminder, is a reminder that in a future iteration, either the federal government expand the TMDL, or at some point in the future, they could come into question whether or not the HRSD's stuff was enough and whether we should... It's a reminder that we've got it covered now, but we don't get to decide on our own that it continues to cover it, even though it does. It used to be multiple millions of dollars a year. We stopped putting that in the CA because we weren't funding it. But it was just a reminder that while we were trying to balance all the other things that we're having to do and wanting to do, there was this unfunded federal government mandate that threatened to swallow everything. That's a ghost, because it serves a purpose to be there. But at this moment, we don't have any unfulfilled TMDL requirement because of our partnership with...
Thank you. That really helps, because I know, reading through all the past ones, million dollars every single year, so that's...
I could add just a couple more sentences onto that for the general public. HRSD was going to be doing the work they were going to be doing anyway, and we are all part of the rate structure. So there was no increase. They didn't charge us as a locality to be part of the SWIFT program to get that credit. That credit basically was something that our rate payers collectively got into already. So that saved our community millions upon...
And when, we talked about it a little earlier, but confirm for anybody that's listening, we're kind of getting eaten up. I don't know if you want to call inflation or just price going on. Because I went back to the FY22 to whatever, and the lighting that we were calling for at the ball fields first and the municipal field were like $320,000. Now it's $60,000. I go, are we looking at moving some of those? Is everything going up at that kind of rate that we're talking about?
I could tell you about the animal patrol, 300%.
Really? Because I was wondering, any way we can maneuver the things that are going up quicker to the front line, but if they're all going up then...
It's all going up. And the reason why you see the... So they didn't really put a lot of emphasis as far as the... That city council is actually acting on it. Projects to find out that they really weren't ready for them to come that way and weren't prepared for the cost that they... Making sure all department heads review what's the request is.
Actual cost based on the year in which it's been approved.
Again, we can do whatever you request, if you want us to change things around.
Now or after the public hearing, and this is your document at this point. Just recognize that what we've attempted to give you is a document that reflects everything that all the departments, including the school division, have asked for. That's the requested column. So you always see that, just like in the operating budget we give you, you see what everybody's asked for, and then the recommended budget is explained, which is in the constraint is essentially something that doesn't require a local government, local tax increase. And any, if we had ongoing money in the CIP, we would show it there, but as well, we see money for maintenance and grants and the things like the shipwreck island grant, you'll see that reflected.
I think it's a great document. I really do. And I appreciate you, Tanya, and your staff. Where's Tara?
Tara, we have Lynn from finance and Thomas.
Thomas as well.
And Thomas too, I'm sorry. Where's Thomas? He's all... Anyway, it's a great document. You did a great job presenting it. And I would encourage members of council to sit down with Randy or Tanya, you know, at any time prior to budget getting to us, and go over those figures with them, and then if you're concerned, we can deal with them before we get to budget night.
Sounds good. Okay. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get this Tara to go down. Tara, yeah? Yeah, we are. Yes.
Hey, Randy, how you doing? How are you? I'm sorry. Hey. Come on. Is giving that one that you're...
Yes, I will, I will.
This is the floor we're supposed to...
Yes.
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 I'm looking for a person.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm just really waiting. 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 I'm sorry. I'm just really waiting.[678.42]
For your service. I thank you for what you do. Because you know where that you going for you. It's good, it's for goes and I feel that. I feel it. And I, I say it on the streets. I say it with your employees. I'll tell them outside our city, I do the same thing. This is God's country. Because you stood beside your folks, your people, your citizens. I like what you do, not hundred percent like legacy. We got porkers up there in the damn big darn front and they should have them in back. But, okay. We live with it. But please just give it consideration to look out for your employees if you have to. Reduce budget money for other areas, capital, whatever. Because you're still gonna do the police department. I've been with Mr. Wheeler on that a number of times. Before he even got talked about. And we got one hell of a police department, good. We got one heck of a fire department and rescue squad. Can't nobody match me, no. And why? Because of you. It's been because of you. Well, gentlemen, ladies, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I just ask that you consider us. That's all I'm asking. So we can keep good employees working for the city. If you have to raise taxes, much as I don't like it, I don't care. That's just me, but there's a lot of people who feel different. God bless y'all, circle five.
Steve, I tell you, you have, uh, you made my night. But let me assure you of one thing before, before you leave us. We're gonna look after our employees.
Yes, sir.
That's the engine that runs this community.
Yes.
And what you said about our city manager is, is as accurate as I've ever heard.
Well, sir, every time I go speak with Mr. Wheeler. And we get behind closed doors and they can be thirty minutes, two hours, it don't make a difference. He brags about y'all. And there's several of y'all in the council when I'm talking. With them in private, they brag about Mr. Wheeler. That's a good way to go, don't you think?
Good match.
You know, it's an excellent match. And you make things happen. But the people here, I can't speak for the community, but I can just say just in my time around, everybody's very happy. And again, I stress you, Mr. Helsel, I wish you best in retirement. A daddy share hate to see you leave.
Appreciate that, thank you.
No, I'm serious, I.
I believe you, I believe you.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Crasman, you have got, you, you're here for the garage issue, right? So we'll get you at public hearing time, is that okay? All right, then we've got Carol Hobson and we'll, we'll get you, Ms. Hobson, we'll get you then. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to address counsel on any, any issue? We'd sort of like to hear from you now if you would. Okay, all right. Let's move on to special presentations. Head for Rose Sanitation District, Ms. Tanya.
She's working the AV.
I'm just getting the AV.
Ms. Smith, are you gonna lead us off? Or Mr. Scaronno, am I saying that correctly? Thank you, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the television audience, please? And then we'll go into your presentation.
Try to keep the comments in, in, you're directing in, in that mic as close as you can get because we have some problems in some of the houses, we want everybody to hear what you got to say.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Scaronno, I'm with the Hampton Road Sanitation District. I'm in the engineering department and I'm the chief of study projects together with engineering. Shirley Smith is with me tonight, she's one of my project managers. We're here to talk about the Wood Creek Road sewer replacement project, chief project manager for that. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, thank you for having us, residents, we're happy to be here tonight. I wish that it was on better terms and we could be singing the praises of this project. It has been a remarkable project, hands down, has not been a great project. So, we'd like to talk to you a little bit more tonight. Appreciate you making accommodations for us to speak with residents after this. We're happy to stay afterwards if you have, so thank you for accommodating us there. Shirley's gonna take over and, and lead some of the conversation and we'll take questions from you all. And during it, after it, your pleasure, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Smith, if you could try to speak a little bit louder, please. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for having us here today, my name is Shirley Smith. I am the HRSD project manager for the Wood Creek Road Sewer Replacement Project. I'm gonna give a little bit of background for about HRSD. The Hampton Sanitation District, we are a public utility. We are your regional wastewater treatment provider. And as a whole, we service, we service twenty cities in Southeast of the region. Rainy area from G D Beach to Southern Hampton to Gloucester to Williamsburg. And smaller areas like Matthews to West Point, Kewauleah, and Eastern Shore. And of course, can't forget to the city of Pocohontree.
PD, my apologies.
There we go.
There we go.
Here on the slide, there are two maps. The one on the left is a zoomed in view of this area. And the one on the left is a zoomed in extent of the project extent. So, but we'll start talking about the map on the left first. The map on the left, you see there is a network of pipes shown in green. Those are the HRSD pipes that come to convey wastewater flow through the region. And the red area circled down at the bottom to the right is the project extent for this Wood Creek Road Sewer Replacement Project. As you can see, there are two lines serving the Pocohontree and Hampton region. One of them is on Wood Creek Road. And the other one is to the west there, it sort of follows Hampton, Lee Hampton Parkway and then goes Big Buffalo Road. So, one of the main reasons why we are doing this project and replacing this pipe is to provide system redundancy and reliability to convey wastewater flow for this area all the way up north to that green rectangle up at the very top to that treatment plant for treatment. And now, the map on the right is a zoomed in view of this particular project on Wood Creek Road. We're all very familiar of this area, of course. The project extends from south to north, on the south, named after Terry's Chapel Road. And then it extends north where it's a little bit past Laniya Way, right outside the dentist's office. And this project just comprised of replacing approximately three thousand seven hundred feet of twenty inch diameter pipe. This pipe is currently in the road, but the old pipe was installed in the nineteen seventies. And so, this particular pipe is a pre-stress cylinder concrete pipe. This particular pipe material has a life expectancy of about fifty to seventy years. There's a lot of factors that go into that, but that's not the average lifespan. Some of y'all may remember an incident in February twenty twenty, before the pandemic shut everything down. And the incident was a pipe failure, right on Wood Creek Road. Pipe failure was remedied by our HRSD operations staff. They were out there to fix the pipe, it took two and a half days and of course, they had one lane closure to fix it. But while they were fixing it, they had the pipe isolated so that they can do that work. While they're fixing it, they decided, okay, well, this failure was due to severe corrosion, they can see that. But what does the rest of the pipe look like? And so, while they had the failure, that section of pipe isolated, they decided to put a CCTV camera through the pipe to see what the rest of the condition looked like. We're all looking at the slide, now imagine smooth, clean, fresh concrete when you are looking at the inside of that cylindrical pipe. Well, that's how we mount. So, in these pictures here, you see, this is the inside of the pipe. In particular, the top of the pipe, we'll call the crown. And it doesn't look pretty. There's pieces of concrete missing, there's corrosion. So, all in all, what we found was the structural integrity of this pipe has been compromised due to severe corrosion. And we knew that the repair that was done in February twenty twenty was only temporary repair. We knew that the larger project had been put in place and so therefore, we decided to replace this section of pipe along Wood Creek Road. Quite a bit of information on this slide, I'm walking through it. I'm happy to let everyone know that as of last week, the pipe installation portion of the project, the large, that's the portion that requires the most amount of work, the pipe installation, has been completed. That's that first item there, FM stands for force main, that's what we call the pipes. There are additional final steps required to wrap up the project, which will require short-term lane, single lane closures, and they are listed here. And those items include pressure leakage testing, which is occurring this week. What that means is, they need to make sure that the pipeline that they install is functioning properly. And they do that by putting water inside the pipe and make sure it's holding up to the pressure, that they will be expecting the pipe and that there will be no leakages. So that when we put the pipeline into service, we activate the pipeline with actual sewage, that can be, there will be no sewage leaking out of the pipe. Another step after successful pressure leakage testing is to connect the new pipe to the old. And once everything is done, everything's functioning properly, we have tests and inspections, contractors come back and do final milling and paving and final restoration and cleanup of the project site. Please note that this schedule shown here, while it's detailed and shows that the project is wrapping up by the end of March, which is great news, it is very dependent on successful testing and weather conditions. So, what does that mean, successful testing? We know leakage tests pass all inspections. And what does weather conditions mean? That means no rain, no standing water, and atmospheric temperatures. And that's really important for asphalt. Can't be wet and it has to be warm. So, when we're looking at this project schedule, where does that fit in the overall agenda things? If you can imagine a, a mountain curve, so, mountain curve goes like this. At the beginning of a construction project, we're at the, at the foot of the mountain here. It ramps up, ramps up slowly, contractors paying things out, ordering materials. And then, activity starts to ramp up and the impact of, of the surrounding area and the construction activity peaks at the top of the mountain curve. And then starts, activity starts going down as a contractor completes the project. And then now we're at the tail end, now we're at the bottom, the other side of the mountain. We're at the tail end where we need to finish these final, final items like leakage testing, milling and paving, and restoration. So, this project for us is a long-term investment. It is a long-term investment because for the average life expectancy for this type of pipe, it will last for the fifty to seventy years. Okay, additional projects along Wood Creek Road. We just finished talking about number one, shown in red here. That is this project in Pocohontree on Wood Creek Road. Number two, shown in purple, is another HRSD project adjacent to this one, directly to the south. And that one is mainly in Hampton, there's a small portion of Pocohontree, right on Kerry's Chapel Road. This one will require single lane closures, but it will not be anything as extensive as this particular project. Because a contractor will, well, the pipe is actually up to the side of the bridge, there's a cross at Wood Creek. It's up to the side, it's an aerial crossing, so it's not underground. And so, the single lane closures are required so that the contractor can park their equipment on the road and they can reach over the bridge and grab that old pipe and remove it. So, there will be no digging in the roadway for this project number two in purple. And that project is slated to be completed this fall. The third project, number three, shown in yellow slash orange, is a VDOT project. This is a VDOT project, we call it the Wood Creek Road Widening Project. This is what, this is the schedule that we are seeing, I grabbed it straight from the website there, from that link. They just awarded the construction contract for this project and they are slated to begin this year and complete them twenty-seven. All right, I know everyone is curious about these steel plates. But before we talk about the actual incident on January nineteenth, I'd like to provide a little bit of background on what steel plates are and why they're used. So, steel plates are used to cover the roadway so that the roadway is accessible for the motor republic. They can drive on top of it and the road can remain open. It's used for trench work and any activity that occurs below ground, types of excavations. So, the preference is actually temporary asphalt. But for this particular project, steel plates were used during cold weather when asphalt was unavailable. So, now the incident on January nineteenth. Cold weather, there was cold temperatures all throughout that week, and January nineteenth was an exception. So, cold weather prevented temporary asphalt from being installed, actually being delivered entirely. So, steel plates were used. This location, as in the location on January nineteenth where they were working, is a unique location in that it was the size of the trench and the location of it being so close to the shoulder and the edge of the road. It was difficult to secure the cold patch. And the cold patch is, what you see in the picture to the right, is that black asphalt around the steel plate. It's used to secure the plate in place. So, later that evening, one of the plates shifted. And Pocohontree, I believe, fire and, and police were notified. And I'd like to take this moment to thank Pocohontree Police and Fire Department for their prompt response and assistance, especially in traffic control while our contractor was out there that same evening when they were notified to re-anchor and to remedy the situation. And they remedied it by welding the two steel plates together. While they're out there, they discovered that one side had issue, had an issue sealing and so therefore, that one side broke loose. Since that incident, the matter has been resolved. Like I mentioned, they have been welding the steel plates together every day, at the end of every day. Contractors, all contractors have contingency plans. The standard for steel plates is to secure the plates with this black asphalt around. And in this case, our contractor's contingency plan was an anchoring system, which is what's shown in the picture to the left, that orange quarter. Contractor recognized that it was difficult to anchor, so they took initiative to order this anchoring system. Unfortunately, it did not arrive until after the incident. However, now that pipeline is complete, the steel plates will no longer be used for this particular project. So, we understand the frustration, the inconvenience, probably very understated, that this project has caused the citizens and motor republic. Citizens and motor republic have been more than patient with us. But we're excited to get this project completed and get out of your way and have a safe and viable pipeline in place to convey, and serve, convey flow and to serve this region. In the meantime, we've got our contact information here on this last slide. Project info, a lot of previous slides with claims if you want to follow and we'll let you create some updates for this project. And we're happy to send this information to any of you all for distribution as well, if you can already have it. And as I mentioned before, we are staying active for additional questions, but no.
Get your bulletproof vest on. When you mention restoration, does, does that mean that we're gonna put the yards back exactly like you found them? Restoration is not what's there now, is that correct?
That is, no, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
So, seating, sawing, driveway, and missing the milling and paving.
And all of that is tied into the dates that you gave us?
Correct. And again, the dates, while they're detailed, it shows that everything's completed at the end of March. It's all contingent upon successful testing and weather conditions.
Do you have any idea, and this, this is not a question, but do you have any idea what it's like to have four or five hundred phone calls? To have to respond to? I think one thing we take very seriously here is, is our constituents. And they've suffered. And our businesses have suffered. If you go talk to any one of the businesses, they'll tell you that the Langley Air Force Base traffic and the national traffic is, is just, was eliminated. They couldn't spend their time in, you know, in line. They wanted to get to a restaurant and get something to eat, so they get back to work. I hope we have corrected that now and we don't have that issue. So that we have both lanes open. Is, is the, is the area that was obviously put down at, at the wrong time in terms of the asphalt, is that corrected? Or are you, are you gonna tell me that it's been too wet and it's been not warm enough?
Are you, are you referring to the funky temporary asphalt that's down there? That will be milled and repaved at the end of the project.
At the end of the project? So, you telling me we have to endure that until the twenty-ninth of March?
Unfortunately, yes.
What if we have a warm day? And a dry day? Why is it we can't patch that?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think what you're asking is, the entirety of the trench that we drove through tonight on the way here, all that funkiness? So, that's all temporary asphalt.
I understand.
And our promise and a part of our permitting review is to do a full lane paving. So, we need to line up the milling and paving machine and we like to do that in long stretches. And so, yes, it is somewhat temperature dependent, but we wanna make sure that we get through. That's why the schedule is so detailed, because we need to make sure that the pipeline doesn't have leaks in it so we don't dig portions of it up again and then it will be lining up. And you mentioned that the twenty-ninth of August is the restoration, including we, we hope to have the milling and paving done prior to. It is, this time of year is, is tricky with cold weather. It needs to be thirty-two degrees and rising and we can't, yeah, and we can't have standing water. So, I wish I could get you more details.
No, I, I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm just, I'm just trying to pass on to you what we're all hearing and it's, it's difficult to try to understand, you know, you were able to get a, a crew out here to put the steel, fix the steel plate issue within a matter of hours. So, why is it that we can't get the asphalt prior to the twenty-ninth if we have some warm days and it's not raining?
I don't have a great answer for you, Mr. Mayor. We will certainly request that with our contractor. But as, as we're finding in the region, finding a welder, which is an in-house skill set for our contractor, is far easier than oftentimes finding subcontractor. Shirley on the way here was telling me that one of the reasons why a lot of driveways aren't redone right now is that the contractor cannot find a concrete subcontractor to do the work. And his, his folks know how to put pipe together, but can't feather concrete and do the formwork. So, we are unfortunately, sometimes by the availability, we will make a request to the contractor to, obviously, be all.
If you, if you could get that resolved, I think I would be great and, you know, we, we, we come in behind some of the water people and some of the HRSD people, our folks come behind that and, and tear up the worst mess you've ever seen in your life. And when our folks get through with it, I mean, it's perfect. And I, if, if we can do it, our public works crew can do it, you guys ought to be able to do it. Okay, any other questions?
Uh, just, come.
Okay, all right, hold on. Go ahead, Carol.
I was just gonna follow up, I haven't had the four hundred complaints the mayor has, but I've had enough. And all of them refer to that funkiness, or funkiness as you called it. And I understand about concrete, I understand, or asphalt, I understand about temporary and all those things. But I just don't understand why you can't smooth that thing out a little bit. It's just nearly, that's the most complaints that, that I get, and that really needs to be done.
Yes, sir. Can I do understand, we drove over tonight and it was certainly rough.
A lot of citizens do it two, three, four times a day.
But, go ahead.
I, I think we're all talking about the same thing, because I've, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, but I, I drive over that. We're talking about the temporary asphalt where you dug the pipe and put the pipe in, okay? It's been done like in twenty-foot increments or something like that. And each increment is a different height, okay? And, and compacted differently? Is that what we're, we're talking about here?
Uh, that was the last point.
If you drive over it, it'll jar you, I tell you, and it's destroying the automobiles in the city, okay? I mean, it's not like it's a little rough, that's an understatement, okay? It's terrible, did y'all drive over it coming in?
Yes.
Yeah, I encourage you to, when you go out, turn out, come back one more time, okay? Because it, it, it is beyond rough, right? And, and seriously, we, we fix the road in the city all the time when we have a problem. And when they fix it, it's smooth enough to drive over and you might feel a little bump, okay? But you don't tear the front end out from underneath the car. I'm certain the contractor can do better than what he's doing. Thank you.
David, did you have something? Let's start down there, Keith, David?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Gordon.
Sir.
Ms. Smith, Mr. Scaronno, and Mr. Brewster, thank you again for being with us tonight and thank you for the presentation. To provide some context for my comments, I want to share with you, I have no experience whatsoever with replacing sewer pipes. However, I do have thirty-seven years in shipbuilding, participating in the construction overhaul of nuclear aircraft carriers and submarines. So, I'm well-versed in the similar trials and tribulations that you've encountered on this project. I'm familiar with industrial projects that are rife with uncertainties, variables that we cannot control, such as the weather. However, that sort of thing should always be anticipated. It's well-known in this region that Pocohontree is a very close-knit community. And those of us on council, as well as the extended city staff, care very much on a personal basis for those that we serve. And we're elected to speak for them in matters such. Prior to the commencement of this project, we based our expectations on the longstanding, well-known, outstanding reputation of HRSD. And based on the way this project has been executed, to be respectfully frank, as your customers, we are disappointed that our expectations have not been met. And unfortunately, it reflects poorly on HRSD as a whole. Those things being said, moving forward, we're putting our faith and our trust in each of you as the leaders of this project that our people will be looked out for first and foremost. And this project will be completed in good order as soon as possible. Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you. Keith, Debbie?
Yep.
Okay, Keith?
Dave said it all.
You have something?
Dave got it.
Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry.
Hi, do you, I have a couple. Thank you, first of all, for being here, I know it's not easy, but I think we all very much appreciate you joining us. I know it's not easy, but I think we all very much appreciate you joining us. My first question is, based on your experience with these projects, how often, how often do these projects pass their leak check on their first attempt? Is it something that usually they, you're good at the first attempt, or sometimes do you need to do the leak check, do a fixed leak check fix?
I'm thinking how to answer this because there, there are no certainties, right?
Yeah.
But what I can say is that MEB, sorry, our contractor is, is very experienced. They've done a lot of work for the region, not just HRSD. The crew that they've had out there has been on that project the entire time. They're a qualified, experienced pipe that improve, so I have every confidence that the pipe will not leak. Typically where we see that, and I say typically because things do happen, it's with crews and/or contractors that do not have experience with this size pipe, type of pipe, the bedding conditions. So I would not expect a leak. However, as Shirley mentioned, it is something we need to do and want to do before we put sewage on the pipeline and then discover that we have a leak. So we don't anticipate any issues with that.
May I follow up on that? If you do have, find a leak, is it repaired from the inside or the outside of the pipe? Other words, do you have to dig it up again, or can you repair it internally?
Depends where the leak is, but typically it would be done on the exterior, so you would have to.
Well, you may have to dig it back up.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Only when it gets warm.
Only when it gets raining. Right. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good. Thank you for the follow-up. Just one last thing for me, and a request moving forward. Something that's been frustrating for me as an outsider, looking in and just trying to keep up with the project, is just the communication with the stakeholders, i.e. the general public, the residents of Pecosin. I was probably one of the first ones to subscribe to the newsletter, the, or the project update emails. And I have to say, those are very few and far between, and very vague with the information. It would be really nice to get just more communication, you know, if, if there is an issue with the leak check or anything like that, just to have more communication with the, the residents of Pecosin.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question that you haven't covered, you've covered in, in earlier meetings with the mayor and I, and our utilities people and our city engineer, but for the benefit of the public, this project took a lot longer than you thought. Can you explain, in a, in a few simple paragraphs, that don't require an engineering degree, why this project took so long? What, what was different than you expected that ended up with this extensive delay?
Great question. We asked the engineers that today, and we, we had with them, we, we think that the primary reasons, this, this project was scheduled to take a year, start to finish, give or take. We've been out here two years. And the contractor mobilized initially the pipe material that we had asked them to install as plastic pipe material, and it required a different connection technique that they found very challenging and cumbersome, given the heavy road, the heavy traffic on the roadway. And so they explored with us some alternative methods of installing that pipe. They actually looked at drilling it in underneath with a drill rig. Worked with interceptors, we finally got that approval. Unfortunately, they attempted two different drills, both failed, if you don't know why. Experienced drilling contractor, experienced contractor, knew the soil conditions, so we lost about six months of time through the design of that, the attempts with that. And then their next request to us was to change materials. They said, well, we don't want to use the plastic pipe, it's very slow, can we switch over to the ductile iron pipe? And again, consultation with interceptors, we got that approval, material ordered, we lost several more months, so we lost about nine months to the failed drills, the switching over to pipe materials, waiting for that 20-inch ductile iron to show up so that we could resume installation. So that is not all of the 12 months that we are behind schedule. The contractor did attempt a number of methods to speed up the work. And like I said, they had other successful directional drills with us, and we were not expecting two fails on that. Had that worked, we would not have had any of the trench work, very little patching. It's been such a aggravation. We would have drilled under most of the roadway and popped out at the end. So that was a wonderful answer, but those are the two primary reasons that we lost nine months on this project.
All right, any other questions?
One more, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So you did switch over, you said, to the ductile iron? And is that treated for corrosion resistance? Yeah?
Yes, ma'am. So, I don't know if you have a monic protection on the outside, but it's lined on the interior with a material, kind of like epoxy coating, ceramic epoxy coating that does resist corrosion.
And that, how's it, 50- to 70-year-ish lifespan?
The, one of the challenges we had in Hampton Roads, pretty much throughout Hampton Roads, but particularly, you know, in areas like Pecosin that are very low-lying, very high groundwater tables, rapish groundwater, is soils are what we call hot, right? They're very corrosive, both from the exterior, and of course, there's sewage in the pipe, which can be also corrosive because of the sewer gases that get created. But in theory, yes, we should expect that level of service, that life expectancy from that.
All I got.
Okay. Any other questions?
This one. We're kind of at the end of the trail in Pecosin, we're at the very end. Got two lines. What direction is the contents flowing in this particular pipe?
I believe generally it goes north up to our Newark treatment plant. Yeah, we would run with Creek Road, it's going toward, the Newport thing was put in back in the 2010s, it runs down towards.
So this stuff in the pipe is not ours?
Actually, no, it's all from Pecosin, right there. We're currently vowed at, at Creek Crossing. When you decide to Creek Crossing.
We're going to do a back and forth. I'm going to ask you to come up here, sir, so, and take that microphone, so that people at home can hear the conversation.
Could you scroll back to the map if you don't want to?
Absolutely.
So on the map on the left, at the end of the red line, that is where we currently have the split point in our system. We have the ability, the flexibility to disentflow the air north and south, depending on which way you go, it is dependent on.
Here, let me take that somewhere.
That's just terrible. Not really. Turn the other one off.
It is off.
I got it. So depending on which way we have the system vowed, it depends on which way the flow goes. Currently, all the flow in Pecosin is generated in Pecosin and actually flows down Victory. So at the southern end of that red line, which is at the creek crossing, everything flows north. There's no flow coming from Hampton on that side currently. So it flowed north, goes around the Food Line Shopping Center in front of City Hall here, and then down towards Tab High Square.
So nothing's been flowing for the last two years?
Correct. When that failure occurred in, in 2020, we had actually already previously vowed off the creek crossing due to conditional issues with the concrete pipe that was out there. That's why I believe in the early 20, 2010s, we had a contractor install an HDPE pipe, also aerial across there, as a fail-safe in case that, we needed to use that line to divert flow. We were trying to create operational flexibility within our system, so if we had an issue somewhere else, we could still get flow to the treatment plant without adversely affecting any region really.
Okay. Will there be any flow after this part's done, but while they're working on the part two?
No. What will happen is, I believe it's currently vowed at the pump station at the self-storage place, that flow, that valve will stay closed until the remainder of the project is done, which would be the portion that's crossing the creek, as well as the portion in Hampton that's going in front of NASA.
Okay. So after number one's done, we still got the problem with number two, as far as people getting home to, into Pecosin?
That, I believe, is just going to be a daily lane closure, no asphalt's being ripped up. It's replace, it's removing the concrete pipe and the HDPE pipe that are currently there, and putting a new HDPE line in, in its place.
Like I said, the complaints haven't all been about the asphalt. That's just been the most recent. I mean, I live in the middle of the red space, and I see it every day, either going north or going south. I've been basically a proponent of you guys getting this done, because everybody's out there working, no one's just laying around doing a great job. It doesn't help, however, when one of your employees that's holding the signs at the other street to come onto With Creek gets in an argument with one of the other neighbors in the neighborhood, telling them about how hard he's working. So it's, it, you know, I can't defend that, but I've defended about everything else until we went into the second year, then it's kind of like, okay, I give up. Thank you for the information.
All right. Any other questions?
Just one, Gordon.
Yes, sir.
I was saying the thing about, as a taxpayer, are there performance clauses in the contract, in the contractors pay when the, they propose things and they fail and it costs six, nine months extra?
There, there are clauses for late delivery of project completion. There are clauses for, you know, we have specifications that we write that they need to follow. I will say that the contractor, through an error of his own, left a million dollars off his initial bid. He did not seek any additional money. The directional drill is two to three times more expensive than digging the pipe. He did not seek any more money for those drills, even after they failed. So at this point, MEB, sorry, the contractor is, is motivated to, to be done as fast as possible. They have, they have hemorrhaged money on this project. But yes, there are normally, there are normally abilities for us to take liquidated damages from them. We didn't think that was prudent at this point, with as much money as they've left on the table and lost.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't think, did you have another question?
No, I just wanted to, to remind folks that the conclusion of, of this presentation, the folks from HRSD are going to stay around for a little while. If you'd like to talk to them directly, Tanya will walk them over and, and you, if you'd like to follow her to the large library conference room, which has been reserved for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to our second presentation, Hampton Roads, Workforce Council. Sean Avery, are you here, Sean?
Yeah, you are. Pecosin's own Sean Avery.
Right.
I'm Pecosin resident.
I hear you.
I like that. Thanks for getting the road fixed. Appreciate that. So thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Sean Avery. I'm the president and CEO of the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. We are your regional workforce development organization here in Hampton Roads, representing 15 cities and counties. And I'm here tonight to talk about the services we can offer, and also what we're doing in the region to meet the needs of the employers and the citizens. I've also have my colleague here, Steve Cook, who is my chief innovation officer, who is also a Pecosin resident. And so we're well-represented and well-representing Pecosin in this organization. So, so my organization is an authority, just similar to HRSD, and we represent the 15 cities and counties you see down there in southeastern Virginia. We actually are the, the product of two organizations merging about two and a half years ago. The Peninsula Council for Workforce Development, who you were well-represented by Buddy Green for many, many years, and Randy was also on that board. And then the South Side was an organization called Opportunity Inc., and then became the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, merged about two years ago to, to create this large organization that now represents the, the total region. We actually represent 33% of all the federal funds that come into the region for workforce development. We were very closely with economic development, so, and talking with David all the time. And we also have been able to increase our budget and our size to be able to be more flexible. When we were originally, those two organizations, our combined budget was about $6 million. We're now close to $40 million. And I only say that to say that what it does, it allows us to put a lot of programs in place that I'm going to show you here today. You're now very well-represented, like Kerry Freeman's on my board and, and does a great job of representing the organization. So what do we do at the organization? We really try to determine what the workforce and the talent needs are in the region, and they really put solutions in place to meet those needs. And so you would think our main customer would be the, the individual, but it's really the business community. Our main driver in everything we do is to make sure that we're meeting the, the employment needs of the business community, meeting the needs of the industries that are in the region. Because if we put somebody into a job that's not part of a high-demand occupation or going to leave to a living wage, then we've done them a disservice. So we don't do any training in basket weaving anymore. There are no basket weaving jobs in Hampton Roads. So that's just not something we focus on. But what we do focus on is what you would think, the advanced manufacturing. Shipbuilding, ship repair is a major area that we focus on. Offshore wind, transportation, logistics, healthcare, business, everything you would think of that's big in the region, we've got our hands involved in that, and we work very closely with other organizations and our educational partners to meet those needs in those areas. So how do we do that? So we have a number of programs that we've put in place to meet the needs of, of the individuals. We've got what we call our Veterans Employment Centers. We have two of those, one in Newport News and one in Norfolk, that's totally focused on working with our transition and service members, our, our veterans and their military spouses and their families, to get them connected with the resources to keep them here in Hampton Roads. We want to be able to keep our transition service here, members here in Hampton Roads. So what we do is, we actually can provide all the resources, resources that you can think, to get them connected with, with housing or, or educational opportunities, and actually even pay for them to go back to school up to $8,000. We have a number of programs, we call our Next Gen Pathways, which are around working with our K-12 system to do internships and mentorships and career exploration activities. We work very closely with public, Pecosin Public Schools, New Horizons, to start developing our future workforce. So we've got many contracts with our school divisions to start to do key training and get individuals who may not be on the right path, or maybe struggling in some areas, we can come in there and provide the resources to help them get on those paths and get those certifications or degrees that they need to be successful. We also have what we call our Virginia Career Work Centers, where any person in this region, regardless of your wealth, your, your status, your employment status, or whatever you are now, can go into our Virginia Career Work Centers free of charge and talk to one of our career counselors or utilize our services to get connected with employment opportunities. And let's say you do come in there and, and you've just lost your job at, at a major manufacturer in the region, they're going away, and you've determined that you're looking to get into a new area of occupation. First, we'll try to get you a job within the skillset that you need. But let's say that that product line that they've used is no longer, no longer in use, or they're not even using that same skillset or that same machinery. We can send you back to school, pay for up to $8,000 for you to get training in that new certification or that new skillset that you need to be successful. We can also do on-the-job training. So for employers, we can also offset the salary requirements. So let's say up to $5,000, we can pay for part of the salary while they're going through and getting the training on the job. We have a number of other opportunities there, but again, it's all free of charge to the employers and all free of charge to the individuals. Then we have our Campus 757, which is around retaining our college graduates. So we're working with all of our, our colleges in the region to connect our college graduates or soon-to-be college graduate internship opportunities. And then we've got a whole new division that we have at the organization called our Talent Division, which I'm going to delve a little bit deeper into it, which is really around developing our future workforce and future skillsets that we need. And the area that we're focusing on right now is the maritime industry, and I'm going to delve a little bit deeper into that, because it's, it's kind of unique things that we're doing. So just kind of going through real quick, we've got six Virginia Career Work Centers throughout the region, right up here at Hampton, at the, the Workforce Development Center is our closest location here. We also do some stuff with your libraries as well. But, but again, you can see the, the various services you can get, anywhere from basic service, anybody can come in, use our computers, print off resumes, apply for jobs, you do as long as you need to in there, all the way up to where we can provide training opportunities. Our business services, which Steve handles right there, and if there's any employers that are interested in this, can help with recruitment events. We can, we can do everything associated with a recruitment event. Basically, think of us as a extension of your Hampton, your human resource department. So we can go in there, work with you on developing on-the-job training opportunities. We can even train individuals, let's say that you have a product line within your, your company that's just going away, that you've got 10 great people in that, in that organization that they just need a little bit of skills so that they can move into a new product line. We can, we can train them in what's called incumbent worker training so that they can move into that new opportunity. Again, our recruitment activities, which is really what we do a lot of, is anywhere from doing on-the, on-the-job, on-the-site recruitment events, to just promoting your jobs, to direct hires, you provide us your job posting, and we'll help do recruitment for that as well. This is just a little bit more on the, on-the-job training opportunities. training opportunities. Then our Veterans Employment Center, exact same thing as the Virginia Career Work Centers, but totally focused on the veterans. And really, we have veterans that work at our Veterans Employment Center to make sure that we're working with them. We have events on the base, so we're actually behind the gates, which is very unique for organizations, very hard to get behind the gates. So, we're actually doing our recruitment events on the base to help get individuals before they get transitioned out. We try to get them six months before they even start to transition so that we can get them connected with the job, even get them into jobs here because they have something called, I'm going to forget what it's called now, but something where you can actually go work for an organization six months before you even transition, and they'll help pay for that. Skill Bridge is what it's called. We can help support those efforts. And so, our Talent Division, this is where we've really stepped up in the last few years on what we're doing. We're focusing, we've really become the model for the Hampton Roads region and for the state on the maritime industrial base. We have been able to get $50 million in investments into the region. Not all that's coming to us. About 25 million of that's coming to our organization to focus on developing the maritime ecosystem. So, you kind of heard earlier when HRSD was talking about welding and being able to find the skills in the construction trades and the maritime trades and the shipbuilding, ship repair trades. We have a problem in our region of capacity in our training system to produce what we need. Yes, we're having issues recruiting individuals, but even if we could recruit every person in this region to meet the job demands of, say, the shipyard, we would not have the educational capacity to train those individuals. We have, we've done some stats, we've done some studies. It would take two years to train, it would take two years' capacity in our training system to train what we need in one year. So, we only have 50% of the capacity for trainers, for welders. If you look at coatings, it would take us almost eight years to produce what we need in one year in coatings. And so, what we did with this 50 million that's coming in here, we're increasing the training capacity in the region. New Horizons is doubling their welding capacity in the next year. Thomas Nelson Community Colleges, Virginia Peninsula Community College is going to be building a brand-new maritime, regional maritime training center in downtown Newport News. Pawty Camp's building one in Suffolk. Tidewater's going to be building one in Portsmouth. Rappahannock's going to be building one in Gloucester. So, what we're doing is we're increasing the size of our training pool through these investments. We have also put out 17 recruiters that are located throughout the region that are helping to recruit individuals into these chaining opportunities. They're not even located in any of our offices. They're actually embedded within our community partners to help recruit individuals. And then the big part of this is, as you can see, we're down in the northeastern North Carolina now, and we're on to the eastern shore, recruiting individuals into the Hampton Roads region so that we can fill these jobs. 12% of Newport News Shipbuilding's employment workforce lives in North Carolina. So, we want to make sure that we're bringing individuals up here to meet those needs as well. We have this whole new recruitment method called Ways of Opportunity that just got launched two months, two weeks ago. We did a huge press conference. We had Congressman Bobby Scott there. Within one day of that, that press conference going out and being on the TV, we had 100 people sign up for the training program within one day of that going up. And so, this has been out for 12, for two weeks, and now we're continuing those opportunities. In the next, just to meet the maritime training needs in the next 10 years, basically, 40,000 openings we're going to have. That's through attrition, the Columbia class coming online, the new AUKUS, which is the Australian, UK, US submarine contract that's going out there, and all the work that's going on with the subs and the aircraft carriers. We're going to, we have a major need for employment in the maritime industry. And so, we're working to meet that needs. And then finally, we've taken this same model, and now we're replicating into healthcare, and we're replicating into the cybersecurity, information technology, unmanned system-type activities. So, we're working very closely with NASA up the road as well. So, that's kind of our story in a nutshell, pretty quickly. What I like to leave with is we're open for business. If you know a business that needs help with recruitment efforts, call Steve. If you need, if you've got any individuals that are, that any of your constituents, if they've called you, and I say this to every city council I go to, if you get a constituent that reaches out and says, hey, I'm having a hard time, I'm having a hard issue, hard time finding a job, send them our way. If they're having an issue with the Virginia Employment Commission, while we do not run that program, give us a call as well. If that's things a mess, we'll be happy to help you with, solve those issues as well. But yeah, that's what we're here for. We're here to help solve those issues.
Hey, questions to Sean?
I have a comment or two. As our representative on the board, Sean and Steve are just doing a great job of bringing money in and developing training opportunities as they went over. And we appreciate that. I was talking to our high school, or our school superintendent just the other day, and already said next year, I can't think of the name of the program you have with the high school, for high school students next year, we've got 70 additional students going into it than over what we have this year. So, they're just doing, bringing a lot of money and training opportunity into our community and just doing a great job.
Yeah, I would echo those comments.
Thanks.
Great, great job you folks are doing, and a lot of people are benefiting from it.
Thank you.
Stay at it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Couldn't have two better guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All righty. Got a set of minutes we need to adopt from our regular session, January 22nd, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we adopt the minutes for the regular session, January 22nd, 2024.
Okay. Second. We have much, many seconds. We approved the minutes from that date. Any concerns or comments? Any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett abstained. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman By. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstain.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, we have three public hearings. The first one is a conditional use permit request for the operation of an automobile repair garage slash tow yard at 611 Yorktown Road. Mr. Canelo, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to present to you just what was read by the mayor. Being mindful of your time, I'll try to be brief but thorough. So, bear with me if you can. This is an application for a conditional use permit from Brianna Russo for the operation of a repair garage and tow yard to be located at 611 Yorktown Road. The application was made with the owner, Charles Counts. It was properly advertised for and adjacent property owners notified about the use. It's to operate an automobile repair garage and tow yard. At the subject parcel, I'll show you that in just a second. The applicant currently owns and operates Guardian Auto and Towing at 608 With Creek Road, and they envision using the new site to expand operations to a new building to better facilitate larger repair jobs. The applicant has expressed that at no time would there be more than eight employees on site, and only three or four cars per day would be repaired at the new location. Important to note, we did not condition restriction on number of employees, but having spoke with the applicant a number of times about it, they're pretty confident that the eight employees would be the max at any, any time there. And that includes the owners and not just mechanics, but other staff as well. This is the proposed site, 611 Yorktown Road. I've referred to it before as the last parcel in the city on Yorktown Road. It's that pie-shaped parcel there outlined in blue. This is a survey of it. I know it's a little hard to see, but you'll see there, the rectangle in the middle is a current building that you can see there. I'll show you a picture in just a second. And it is accessed from east Yorktown Road or Yorktown Road. This is the entrance on the left, as is seen from the road in that picture. To the right is literally just swinging the camera right where you see a row of trees. I'll show you that because oftentimes when you speak to someone about this parcel, they don't hardly know it's there because it's pretty well-hidden. This is it from the street. The pictures were taken a couple of months ago. It's a little more visible now that some of the foliage has died off, but that is how it appears from the street. This is the building currently as it sits, and you can see an old foundation there. This is additional information repressed of the applicant. The planning commission considered this and postponed action on it, barring some additional information from the applicant, and that's what you see here. Their intention is to work on passenger vehicles and boat trailers. We've conditioned the hours of operation just slightly different than originally proposed to Monday to Saturday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We did not restrict non-mechanic work. Non-mechanic work being paperwork, HR activity, or cleaning the shop, hard to clean the shop when folks aren't working. The anticipated shop size is 50 by 100, four bays, and we've conditioned that the maximum number of inoperable vehicles to be stored on-site at any given time is restricted to 15. We acknowledge that this is not to be a junkyard or scrapyard. And we've also conditioned that no towing operations allowed between 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless for emergency services. Emergency services meaning a call to Guardian from dispatch or public safety service for assistance. Emergency not meaning when I get a flat at 3:00 AM, I call the Russos and say, please come help me out. The planning commission did recommend approval of the application as it's presented to you by a vote of five to one. These are the recommended conditions. I'll go through them. The plans for the site shall only be approved once all requirements of the code are met. The hours of operation of the repair shopper to be from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Again, no restriction on non-mechanic workdays or hours. Repair work shall be performed within the building only. That's our intention to mitigate any noise that the use may generate. There, you see the condition about inoperable vehicles, but we go further to say that they should be stored inside of or in the rear of the building and screened from public view, and no such time shall more than 15 be stored on-site. Towing operations shall not be performed between 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless for emergency services. Screening shall be maintained along each property line as required in City Code Section 10-8 of the B2 District Regulations. Those are regulations you're all familiar with. You've seen them before. Those are the screening regulations we use for storage yards. And it talks about fencing, shrubbery, or a combination of man-made and natural materials. And it really gives staff the discretion to determine whether or not the buffer is adequate. So, we'll work through the owners on that through the site development process. Sinage for the sites to be permitted in accordance with the code. And the three you always see is that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. And if at any time it's operating in violation of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the city council may revoke the permit. If the use is discontinued for two or more years, the permit shall become non-voyed, and that city council reserves the right to amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. That is all I have for you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to answer questions from anyone. I will likely defer to the applicant if you have operational questions, but certainly happy to answer any you may have right now.
All right, Thomas, thank you. Well done. Any questions to Thomas?
Yes. Oh, okay. Thanks, bud. I don't have these in any particular order, so if I go back and forth, it sounds like it's probably true. One thing I'm concerned about is the appearance of Coleson to visitors. People that come up With Creek Road, they're probably not impressed right now because of the condition of With Creek Road as we're coming in, which we spent time talking about. The Marine earlier made comment about coming down Victor Boulevard. We've got an obstacle to the right that is not aesthetically pleasing. The only other way into Coleson is in Yorktown Road. I'm concerned about what that would look like as you come into Coleson, which is a residential area in that side, trees, small houses and things like that. So, but we're talking about putting a business there, conditional use permit being more discussing. Okay. Let's throw that out there. Second one, I went on the GIS system, Love it, and looked at the lot, uniquely shaped lot. It's the last lot in Coleson coming down Yorktown Road. Can you answer for me, is there direct access onto Yorktown Road from this lot without going over any other properties?
There is. It's actually been determined by the court that it has illegal access. And it's shown on that survey. You should have it in your packet a little clearer to see, but you'll see below the building, an area marked, it's dotted, I'll say, it's gray. That, that should, there you go. Perfect.
I know. I kept prepared.
Now, I need that. But that's the legal easement to the lot. So, it does have access. It doesn't cross anybody else's property.
Okay. Now, I know it was discussed at the, at the planning commission meetings, the ability to go in and out of this lot from Yorktown Road.
Sure.
It was a concern to them, and it is a concern to me as well. If you were to try to turn right out of that property in Yorktown Road or from Yorktown Road into that property, you'd have to make close to 180-degree turn. Am I right?
I'm not sure if it's 180 degrees.
No, 180, we've turned, doing a U-turn, but it's pretty close because you have to come back down this direction in order to get into there. Pretty good-sized vehicles are light, although I heard the, only 99% of the traffic that are, the use of vehicles or Guardians are large, you know, are small ones so they can make that turn. But I know that there was concern, and I do too, if a person coming down that road, and I always use the worst-case scenario, if I'm sitting at a traffic light, the light turns green, I like to think and wait before I get on the horn to remind the person in front of me to go, because it might be my 85-year-old mother up there. It may also be my 16-year-old daughter who got her driving permit today. Be a little patient. I'm a little concerned with the two-lane road there, the person doing a 170-degree turn, whatever, if they're going to come from this direction or that way, or worse, come around this way. If they have a right turn out of that from the way it's presented, you're forcing the vehicle into oncoming traffic, whether there's traffic there or not. You're forcing them into the oncoming lane. I, I don't know. I'm not a policeman. I don't do traffic studies and stuff like that, chief. But that doesn't seem like a good thing to me. Next question. Understand what you said, the lot will be fenced in accordance with the requirements you had there. Will this cut down on the number of vehicles at Guardians now at 608 With Creek Road?
I'll answer your questions in three parts, if you don't mind.
Nope, not a problem.
The first one concerning, you know, the appearance, you know, of course, we're all aware that at the corner of that entrance to our city is a repair garage that we have no jurisdiction over and has been there for some time. I do trust, given how well the current shop is maintained of the applicant, that this will be no different. We've also gone the extra step here in requiring the landscaping and buffer zone around this property so that it will be what you see, the trees most of will be maintained, especially along the property line as the condition is written, and especially in front as well. So, we've taken into account any future site concern. I think we've addressed it appropriately. As far as the right-hand turn, it is a tough turn, but in speaking with our engineer today, I think it would be pertinent during the development plan process and site plan review. We may suggest to the applicant, which I'm sure they're already planning to do, we could almost redirect that entrance a bit to bring it a little straighter onto Yorktown so it's a little friendlier of a turn. We're happy to work with them through that.
That kind of gets back to why I was asking about the lot to the south and south and east of that. Somebody that lives in Yorktown or York County, access to the property impacts how drive into it and out of it, right?
Right. But...
Someone owns that little triangle there.
Correct. It does. And you see the, the old access there. But I do think there's enough room where this lot has legal access to address a little bit of that concern on how the driveway is currently bit of that concern on how the driveway is currently configured.
The, understand the tow vehicles.
The number of vehicles, I'm not sure how that will reduce vehicles at their current shop or not. It may be more appropriate for the applicant to answer.
Okay. We can wait for that one. Understand there's going to be no more than 15 vehicles stored there.
Inoperable vehicles.
Inoperable vehicles.
Yes, sir.
But it doesn't say any limitations to the number of operable vehicles.
Correct.
Nor does it say anything about employee vehicles.
Right.
So upwards of 30 vehicles on that property at any one particular time.
You would, I'm not sure if they will have 15 inoperable vehicles there at all time, but we're restricting them to 15. And, you know, there's no method for parking spots required for this use. But what we would require and use in the review processes, one per employee at the largest shift. So if the max is eight, according to the applicant, then we would require those eight spots. And then, of course, you know, they would have a few for customers, drop-offs, et cetera. I'm not, I can't give you a hard number on how many spots there will be.
When I first heard about this, I first started thinking, great, it'll reduce the number of vehicles at 608 With Creek Road. As I believe I mentioned in one of the previous meetings, I was thankful when, and once again, I live in, off of With Creek Road to the south in Hudsonwood subdivision. Pearson's Garage, which is one of four vehicle repair places in the city, recently replaced their fence along the side of the thing, which greatly improved the looks of his repair facility. And I like that as compared to perhaps the other repair facilities. Now, if this were to reduce the number at the previous location, I'm all in favor of that. If it's merely just adding more to it, I take that into consideration. That's all the questions I got. I'll turn it over to Bud.
Anything further, Keith?
No, that's all from me.
All right. Any other questions, Thomas? Boyd?
Yeah, I do. First off, following up a little bit on Keith's comments, right now, there's a lot of cars stored in front of that place on Yorktown and Picocin Avenue. I would like to see that go away. Also, I would not want that to be the case in this new location. I don't think you got a pile of cars right there. My impression is this is the area that what used to be Old Count's store, is that not correct?
Correct, that's true.
And I think there used to be a garage and maybe even a gas.
I'm not sure about.
Yeah, pumps, sir.
Yeah. It was definitely a repair place at one time.
It was a commercial operation there before.
Correct.
And can you flip back to the drawing, showing the property location? Because I took an impression from the drawing, okay? And can I borrow your laser pointer for a second?
I believe it's councilman Fies.
Go back to the.
Push the star.
It's coming.
With regarding what Keith was talking about as far as access to the property, when I
drive by there, it used to be the access to the building, it's on this slanted portion of road here. And right now, the picture that you show shows this is a green area, a couple of barrels right in here that block that entrance. But this drawing, at least looking at it on what I got from the city, it was a disashe area, they could come straight out to the road here for access to the building. Is that, which is correct? Can they come straight out like that? Or do they have to do more than 180, almost 180-degree turn going there?
The portion that came through the parcel southeast of this one is an abandoned route. So the current access is what you just mentioned, shown here on the left, which is this driveway to directly to the store.
You have to go down there.
Correct.
All right, well, the drawing shows like a dotted, a hash area coming straight out from it, and aside from this little side access. And I was wondering if they could just come straight out to Yorktown Road rather than...
There is an intervening parcel between the front of this one and Yorktown Road, so they wouldn't have direct, straight access.
So they do have to make that really sharp turn to come back into there?
As of now, yes, sir.
Okay. And the other question is, there's an old structure there, the Old Count's store building, I think it is, that's there. Is that going to be removed as part of this project?
Yes, sir. That will be removed.
That goes away.
And how the new building is situated, I'm not 100% sure of, but everything there will be removed as it exists currently.
So there will be a new building in here as a garage?
Yes, sir.
And there will not be cars stored and parked out front of it?
No, sir. If you, I'll just re-refer you to the condition that speaks to that. Inoperable vehicles shall be stored inside of or in the rear of the building and screened from public view. So the condition is there, so that we're not seeing the cars there to be worked on.
So they're going to build a new structure, there'll be a garage for doing the work, and the cars will be worked on in there, and there will be a fence there from there so that the cars behind there can't be seen from the road?
That's correct.
Okay. And the words "non-mechanic work," towing vehicles, is that included in non-mechanic work?
We've restricted the towing hours in a different condition. So you see there, Condition 5. Towing operations shall not be performed between 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. unless for emergency services.
So if there's a major accident on the interstate, something they need to call, towing service?
If they are dispatched from a dispatch center or Public Safety, whether it be police or fire, that's the emergency service.
If I called and said, my car won't start coming towing?
That's not an emergency service.
That's not emergency, okay. My question.
Any other questions? Thomas? Thomas, thank you. Well done. Appreciate that. All right, let's open the public hearing then and ask those who object to the conditional use permit. And Ms. Hopson, would you like to go first?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Carol Hopson. We spoke last year.
Yes, ma'am.
...to the phone about my concerns. The end of my driveway is positioned where this tow truck yard is anticipated to be. So given that there's Freddie's Body Shop 600 feet away from the end of my driveway, I'm a bit concerned because my vision for Picocin is one that I see here on your seal with, you know, nature. And it's a rural residential area that we've all enjoyed for many years. And people speak of other businesses that have been there in the past. It's 2024. You know, we're talking about 20 years ago, when there wasn't that much traffic. And when the, when Legacy of Picocin becomes occupied with the cars that will be there, I anticipate that traffic from Victory Boulevard will be spilled over onto East Yorktown Road. And my ability to get in and out of the driveway will be impossible. So for that, for those reasons, I object to this application. And I'm sure that for most of you, you would be here if it was you. So do you have any questions for me?
I don't think so, Ms. Hopson. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Boy, I have a question, Ms. Hopson, if you don't mind.
Hold up a minute. Would you come over to the microphone, please?
Could you use the laser pointer to show us where your driveway access is relative to the property?
I can't. I can't use a laser. Here's a laser. So.
Is your driveway on that property?
I have an access, like, right there. Do you mind stepping to the microphone? I'm sorry.
Can you use your microphone so we can hear?
I can see where 212 is because it's not too.
You're talking, but I can't hear you.
Oh, here. You can walk over there and you... I'm unable to see where 212 is.
Thomas, can you help her out with that?
212 East Yorktown is right here where the mouse is.
Yeah, I can't see the numbers so clearly.
This is 212. To its south is 208, and to its north across the head of the flag lot is 218.
So there's a driveway that you can't really see here. And the driveway is directly across, and the road tapers to 25 feet across. It's a small road. So where Freddie's Body Shop is, there are four lanes of traffic, and that tapers, and then you can see it a little bit here where it starts to taper. But it tapers really narrowly at the end of my driveway. So there isn't a lot of room.
Can you use the laser pointer to tell me where your driveway is there?
You know, I don't see it here.
Thomas, could you point that out again, please?
I think what Ms. Hopson's referring to is here, and it's the entrance to the home in the back. Is that correct, Ms. Hopson?
Well, there are two homes that use that one driveway that you can't see. So 216, which it looks like 370.
The driveway is right where my mouse is moving right now.
That's where the driveway is?
Correct. You just can't see it because of the trees.
The trees are obstructing the view of the driveway. So there are two residences that use that one driveway.
Now, you're concerned about the narrowness and the traffic there?
Yes, it's very narrow.
But your driveway doesn't impinge upon that other property?
Impinge upon...
It's not, it's not inclusive of the property across the street.
Ms. Hopson?
No.
Could you go back to the podium, please?
Sure.
And if we could keep our conversations back and forth, it would really help.
If you could speak to the microphone. Every time you turn to talk to the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the, look at the picture, no one can hear you.
Okay. Your property doesn't connect directly to the property that we're talking about tonight?
It does not, but I have some sort of easement on that property. Yeah, just where the, just where the entrance is, I own part of an easement along with Mr. Count's and the Clark family.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. Were there any other questions, Ms. Hopson? I don't think there were. Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Kreisman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I live at 218, live right next door to Ms. Hopkins. My driveway is directly crossing this. This property is residential, and everything around it's residential. And your own comprehensive plan for the city of Picocin says, the history of Picocin used to be mom and pop grocery stores, gas stations all over. And y'all been wanting to change that, to the, to changes to the health and well benefit of the quality of life of residents of Picocin. And one of y'all's objectives, number two, was to concentrate the commercial businesses in Picocin to certain areas. And the certain areas, and number five of your comprehensive was to With Creek Road, to Big Woods, and Victory Boulevard. Y'all wanted to concentrate it. Well, now you're going to be putting a commercial business right in a residential area. My family moved in Picocin in 1960. I got sisters and brothers and nephews and nieces that live all over Picocin. And I moved away, and when I finally decided to settle down, I moved back to Picocin looking for a house in Picocin. I found this house up on there because I wanted a house that wouldn't flood. But unfortunately, that's still a flood area, even up there. And also, it's actually in Yorktown. It's not, it's right on the line. The city line comes right down the middle of the road in front of my house. So I was looking for a residential quiet neighborhood to live in. I knew that old building was there because you've seen it, but no one's been in it for 20, 25 years. It's not been used. On this, like I said, the Planning Commission, I went to the last two meetings when they were discussing this, and the last meeting in November, they had a couple there were getting, trying to give you a conditional use permit for bed and breakfast. They've been doing it for a couple of years, but now they've got complaints. So they have to get a conditional use permit. And I listened to the clinical mission talking about how a B&amp;B in a neighborhood is so intrusive and causing problems. And now you're talking about putting a 50 by 100, four-bay car garage with a tow lot in a residential neighborhood. How can that, and they voted for it 20 minutes later, to send it to y'all? How can that not be an intrusive in a residential neighborhood? The place that they're at now, y'all can see what it looks like. It's always got cars sitting around. It's got all kinds of junk. It's all kinds of wrecks sitting there. I know at one point, years ago, that was called Champ's, where Gene Champ ran that place. I worked for Gene Champ back in the 70s when he had his shop or gas station outside of Picocin, up where the Bojangles was. I used to go out late nights with him doing tow cars, doing toes, because he had a tow business. I helped build the tow lot behind it. This happens all the time. He used to get daily calls to tow cars at night. So I'm going to have to put up with cars being towed in and out night and days, Mondays through Sundays. There's not going to be a day off. And they also saying that they were only going to have cars towed there, worked on, and tow it back to the other shop. That's what they originally said at the first meeting. Well, that's not going to happen. They're going to have people start coming to that shop, bringing the vehicles there, and then picking up the vehicles. It's going to turn into a full-time commercial business. It's going to be intrusive in a residential neighborhood. And I just can't believe that any one of y'all, if this was proposed to be in your neighborhood, or right in front of your house, in my case, I look out my front door, I look right at this. All I got separating my house, my property and my house is Yorktown Road. Right there is that property. I'm going to have to look at this forever. And once this is built, it's not going to change. No one's going to come in there and tear down a 50 by 100 building and turn it back into residential property. Once y'all do this, you're basically changing the zoning of this. And like I said, I can't believe any one of y'all, if this was proposed to be in your neighborhood, or probably directly in front of your house, y'all would be happy with this. It's going to be intrusive. I just, and when I read your comprehensive plan, which I wanted to try to change and keep the residential, the small-town feel of Picocin, well, this is going to, what's next? You're going to start doing it, putting in all little Florida businesses? I know some people that I've talked to that said, well, they've got businesses all over Picocin, but most of them have been there 50, 60 years or longer. They were there a lot of times before any of the houses were built around them. People had a choice. There was a gas station there, or there was a little store, they'd build a house right beside it. I'm not having a choice. I might have it just stuck right in front of me, and I might have to put up with the traffic. And that's a fine road. The telephone pole in front of my house has already been hit twice and knocked down because of traffic coming, because people flying out of Picocin. The mailboxes were taken out about six months ago, all four mailboxes. And just like Ms. Hopkins says, once the traffic starts getting so bad on Victory because of the legacy, people will start cutting up Yorktown Road, it's going to turn into a major thoroughfare. And people do it now, trying to get around the traffic on With Creek, they cut down Carrie's Chapel, and go down Yorktown Road to pass it. They do it all the time. And it's a busy road. And like I said, that, where they're turning out, it's going to be a hard turn if they make a right turn at that place. So I hope y'all will just take it in your heart, think about it. How would you like this in front of your house? And forever. This is not going to ever go and change. Like I said, this is never going to be torn down and turned back in, and somebody will build a house on it. Once this goes in there, it's going to be there forever. And it's just never going to change. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreisman. Appreciate you. All right, any other questions to Thomas? All right, Thomas, thank you very much. Let's close the public hearing, and we need some action from council. We have a resolution attached.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution to approve a request for a conditional use permit by Charles A. Count's owner and Brianna Russo applicant for the operation of automobile repair garage tow yard at 611 Yorktown Road, tax-melt parcel 17-01-00-0023, approximately .7021 acres, zoned RES single-family residence.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion made in second. Ms. Kim?
Oh, do we have a discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
One of my biggest concerns about this particular conditional use permit was lighting because I know with the current Guardian shop, there's a really, really bright light coming down Picocin Avenue, it's right in front. And I thought that that was their light for security. It's a very bright light. But it looks like that is not indeed their light, and that is a Dominion Power light. So, and I know that we do have a lighting... So, and I know that we do have a, a lighting, um, lighting ordinances that this would fall under. So, I just wanted to say that, um, in looking into it, it won't necessarily have those bright lights like the, the Guardian on With Creek.
All right, other questions or comments? David?
I, I do have one comment. I just want to refer back to the very strict conditions that go along with this conditional use permit. Mr. Canelle has discussed those to great detail, and I would call particular attention to number 10. If this should ever become a problem, which I doubt it will based on the, the past performance of the Russos at Guardian, the best predictor of future performance is past performance. So, if for some strange reason, in the unlikely event that problems arise, we have these conditional use and, conditions in progress, city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of this permit as they see fit. That's pretty, pretty binding right there. So, just wanted to refer back to the protections that we have for all involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. Or anything else?
Just, oh, wait.
For Thomas, I hear you say at the planning commission meeting that, uh, regarding construction that will take place on this, if approved, would be something that would fall under site plan guidance and be followed by the community development as far as everything like that. I mean, I could talk about the traffic.
Yeah, all of the development of the slot will fall under all applicable city codes for site plan review and, and development plan process.
Just a comment. There's apparently a big need in Pecosin for this type of business just by looking at the number of vehicles that's in and out of all places in Pecosin, the Guardian and the others as well. And since Guardian has operated that place, uh, place where it's being now, there at the corner of With Creek and Pecosin, they've kept it, uh, very clean and orderly. Won't have a bunch of vehicles in there, and I'd like to compliment them for that. And if they continue that type of operation at the other place, I think it, it won't be the eyesore or the visible junkyard that Councilman Fai was concerned about.
All right, anything else?
Yep, one more set of comments. I understand the concern of Ms. Hopson, and, uh, excuse me, your name again, sir?
Kreisman.
Vega?
Kreisman.
Okay. Um, but this is a conditional use permit, right?
Right.
So, so the, allowing them to do this is on condition that they comply with all of those conditions. And, and I encourage you, okay, that should this pass, okay? We have the right to review and amend the conditions, and we, and we can pull it, okay? At the drop of a hat, okay? So, if, should they violate those conditions, okay? I encourage the both of you to notice any violations and report them, okay? Because and and will if they violate the terms of the condition.
Yes, sir. Any more comments?
To Councilwoman Emmett's concern about the light, uh, sometimes we've had, uh, restrictions on the light remaining on the property so it doesn't leak out into other properties. We add a condition to that effect.
Um, I am assuming, and Thomas, you can answer for me, that there is lighting ordinance that this would fall under?
We have, um, drafted language to include lighting plans as part of our site plan process, and as part of that, uh, through their development plan, the Russos will provide a lighting plan, um, and we will review that to ensure there's no spillover lighting onto adjacent properties.
So, basically, that's covered already?
It's, it's covered.
Okay.
And the only way vehicles to be repaired will get there will be basically tow, not gonna be a drop-off box?
There, there's no condition, um, on how vehicles are to be dropped off, no sir. Um, customers will have the ability to drop their cars off just as any other repair garage.
Okay, we done?
Okay, but those cars aren't gonna be allowed to stay there all day?
No, we're not.
They're gonna have to move them. Like, they're not gonna be sitting there at night.
Inoperable vehicles will have to be screened from public view, whether it be in the building or in the rear of the building, uh, and inside of appropriate screening.
Perfectly operable vehicles could number 10.
I'm sorry, Councilman Fai, can I hear you?
Perfectly operable vehi- vehicles could number like 10 or 20.
Operable vehicles-
Wait for oil change, something like that.
Yeah, they would be able to maintain in, uh, in the parking lot.
For instance, if I drive in there with a spare, uh, flat tire in the back of my truck, I can leave my truck there while they fixing the tire. Put it back in the back of the truck and drive it, and put it off back on the trailer. That kinda, that kinda thing.
I'm talking more like the drop-off, the oil change, come back, and then do that.
Well, yeah, but you have to, uh, well, I think.
I, I would just defy you to take an area of your parking lot and define which ones are operable, which are inoperable. When you're talking about driving by and seeing a whole bunch of vehicles.
Are we done?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Buntykin?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye, but I'll keep my eye on it.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, Kim, thank you. Let's move on to item two in a pub, uh, second public hearing, rather. It's a master plan amendment request, legacy cottages. Thomas, got you again?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, my second presentation for you tonight is a, uh, request, as you just read, it's a master plan amendment request from Lamont Myers, uh, for the legacy of Pecosin Development. They are seeking to amend, uh, part of the master plan that called out the cottages to be condominium-owned, uh, all on one, on one lot. Uh, and I'll walk you through the request. It was properly advertised for, and adjacent letters were sent. They were shown, uh, on the original master plan as multiple units on one parcel, uh, condo-owned, just as I, uh, stated previously. Uh, they were not approved as fee simple, single-family lots. Uh, so what you find throughout, uh, the rest of the development where you purchase your lot, you purchase your home, you pay your taxes on the home and the lot. The request, uh, is to establish setbacks and internal property lines within the cottage portion of Legacy and convert those from condominium-owned to single-family-owned. This is, uh, the schematic site plan that was, uh, presented with the original application. You can see, uh, there, I've boxed and read, uh, the cottage parcel of the development. Originally, there were 11 shown, but there's some stormwater features and, uh, other engineering features that I'm not qualified to speak on, uh, on the parcel, um, and it did take a few of the lots out. Uh, but currently, uh, eight cottages, uh, are shown for that portion. This is, uh, the approved development plan for that portion, uh, of the Legacy development. The road you see coming in there is Blue Crab Point. It'll be a public street once it's, uh, complete. The reason I'm showing you this, uh, because you see those parking spaces, uh, inside of the red lines. Those will, two of them will be dedicated to each cottage. They will be conveyed, uh, to individual cottages, but this portion, uh, will not be in the public infrastructure. It'll be maintained privately by the homeowners association. Basically, uh, whether you approve tonight's, uh, application or not, but I wanted to point out that the parking lots for these cottages will not be maintained, uh, by the city. This, uh, is another view of the amendment request. This is a, uh, conceptual plan. You can see the setbacks laid out there, and you can see the building footprints. The line you see in yellow, uh, will be a fence, and I will get to that in just one second, but you can see that it, uh, it lies in the rear property line, uh, of lots C3 through C8, uh, right on, uh, the city and county line. Originally with the master plan, uh, unlike the apartments, uh, and single-family homes and townhouses, there were no elevations of the cottages presented to council. What was conditioned was that the size of the cottages would be a minimum of 1,000 square feet, and that they would substantially comply, uh, with architectural styles and building materials, utilizing the single-family detached and townhome structures. Uh, and that's taken right from the original outline of Proffers. These are the submitted elevations. The prospective builder is Sky Blue Homes, uh, out of York County. I've included these, uh, so that you can see them, and if you've had a chance to run through the development, uh, you'd find that these are substantially conforming, uh, to the single-family and townhome structures. The planning commission recommended approval of the request unanimously with the following conditions. The granting of the master plan amendment will necess, will necessitate a development plan amendment, uh, for all applicable development plans and associated record plots. All other requirements of the code and the approved master plan as amended shall be followed. All applicable federal and state requirements shall be complied with. The fourth was in addition in response to comments, uh, from one of the adjacent property owners in York County. He was concerned about the property line delineation and some buffer between these homes, uh, and the rear of his property. It's on Trace Trail in the woods of Tab. Uh, so through that conversation and subsequent conversations I've had with the developer, we've added this fourth condition. This was the yellow line I showed you earlier. Uh, the builder shall construct a six-foot privacy fence in accordance with the legacy of Pecosin fence guidelines at the rear property lines of lots C3 through C8 as shown on the plan, uh, before the issuance of each certificate of occupancy, uh, for lots C through through C8. Uh, so we'll achieve that fence, uh, as requested, uh, by an adjacent property owner in York County. That is, uh, the application that's before you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions to Thomas?
Boy? Yeah, go ahead. Can you go back and put up the, the definition of cottages? Okay, okay. And who, who did you say the builder of these are gonna be?
The builder, um, if approved, uh, is Sky Blue Homes. It's a custom home builder, uh, based in York County, and they do have representatives here this evening.
Okay, are there also gonna be Orion Home Design and Construction?
This, if Councilman Southall, I can expand. These are the elevations submitted from Sky Blue. Uh, these are their elevations, and they are not Ryan Home elevations, but they are substantially conforming to the Ryan Home elevations you see in the development.
But, but these are your homes? Okay, built by you? What about property setbacks on those properties?
Do you?
I, I wanna know about that.
Thomas, direct questions to Thomas, boy?
The setbacks, um, there, there were no setbacks, uh, originally proposed, um, and you'll find in your packet what the applicant has asked for, um, and, and it'll go right into the setback document with the rest of the master plan is 10 feet, uh, in the front, and the rear of the lots in five feet on the sides. That is shown on this, this plan. I have another one that's shown as well.
All right. Here.
Hold it just a minute. A week?
Um, yeah, well, I, when, 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 when the properties were first presented to council,
okay, um, we were shown pictures of, of homes, and we were told, uh, they're gonna be H.H. Hunt or another builder who internationally recognized for the really high-quality products that they did, and, uh, it turns out none of them are, okay? Uh, and the cottages was, it was my impression, wrong, my wrong impression, that they were gonna be on the order of 1,000 square feet, maybe just a little over, okay? And they would be small cottages, and on, on that same property, I imagined it was gonna be somewhat of a decent front yard and backyard. I was looking forward to those happening, okay? Uh, now they're about one and a half times that size, and, uh, and, and I found out there were no property setbacks, and maybe no backyard or front yard, and both of those things gave me concern, okay? And so, uh, that's, that's what's concerning me about that, okay? I, I feel there's a lot of lipstick put on there, okay? I was, I was looking for an internationally recognized set of homes that would be a bright store for people driving into Pecosin, okay? Bud's personal opinion is I don't see that.
Mr. Mayor? Can I ask you-
Yes, sir, go ahead.
A qualification, or, uh, a question to Mr. Canelle. I just want to clarify, the proposed setbacks, um, proposed by the builder, I'm looking at Mr. Myers' letter to you, is 10-foot front yard, 5-foot side yard, and 5-foot rear yard. Is that correct?
That is a request, and I'm sorry for not clarifying, uh, Mr. Manager. Uh, you'll see here that, um, on the south of Blue Crab Point, they show a 10 fat, a 10-foot rear setback. But on the north side of it, where the rear property lines, um, but other, um, parcels in the Legacy Development, uh, they show a 5-foot setback. They've asked for five for all eight parcels. I understand from the applicant, uh, that's more or less to give them a, some room to work, uh, on the parcels. They show 10, uh, but believe it is their intention to stay at 10, uh, and unless I'm wrong, I believe the footprints of the homes will achieve a 10-foot front and rear.
Okay, thank you, Thomas.
Are, are we not gonna require the 10-foot setback?
What you have, what was requested by the applicant and for your approval tonight is a 10-foot front setback, a 5-foot side, and a 5-foot rear.
You know, what, what, what I see is something going on that property. Seems to me that they could probably do something besides cottage, besides cottage houses, and I don't know if this council would have anything to do with that, quite frankly. If you, if you go down to look at the property, and you think about what's gonna be there, and you look at the pictures that we've been, you know, supplied with, I think it's, I just think it's a, a very unique addition to that project in that they're ideal for an elderly couple, they're ideal for a starter home, for young people. If you have a condo unit there, I mean, I, I have no right to even try to start to think about how much things cost and, you know, how you build them and all those kinds of things. I see it as, as a positive for the, uh, for Legacy. And I'm glad we got an opportunity to, to see those, quite frankly. First I saw them was last week. I think it'd be a very unique addition to that project.
Also, I think that it's, uh, better than what, uh, we approved last time where it is separate homeowner-owned units and lots.
Right.
Um, it makes it private property rather than, uh, if we leave it like, if we disapprove this, leave it like it is, they can put, uh, 12, uh, condominium-type, or, yeah, condominium-type units there, and I think, uh, individual homeownership is preferable to that. That's just my personal opinion. And there's no setback requirement currently either. So, we're getting setbacks and private homeownership, which I think's good.
I can say that's what they're coming for. Make it rather than being condominium-run to be individual homes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And if you look at the property, that's far more attractive, in my view, than a condominium unit.
Right. And that borders right up against, I guess, the drainage, the drainage just that comes out of York County. Our engineer put that nice plan together for us or whatever.
If you say they, I'll, for all intents and purposes, to the west where that common area is, that's where that drainage feature I spoke of earlier, uh, cut out, it eliminated a few of the cottage, cottage units as, uh, shown on the original plan.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Did you? You all done?
Oh, no.
All right, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Well, wait a minute, let me open the public hearing first. I've got some folks that might wanna speak to it. So, along with the public hearing, is there anyone here that objects, uh, to this- Is anyone here that objects to this amendment change? Anyone that would like to speak in favor of the amendment change? Yes, sir. How you doing, Lamont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. Good evening. My name is Lamont Myers. I'm one of the managers of the Big Woods Development Company at One Ten Mid-Atlantic Place in Yorktown. Thomas, would you mind putting up that side-by-side drawing that we sent earlier? I don't know if you still have it.
I don't, I don't believe I have it loaded, but I...
I might be able to answer, Mr. Southall, some of your questions as well. Let me just, if I can... I just...
That's what you mean?
Here it is, uploaded on the screen.
Sorry, go ahead.
If you'll notice, if you look at the two side-by-side drawings here, they're exactly the same. So the way they're, the approved, this is an excerpt from the approved development plan. The construction drawings are fully approved. Actually, the infrastructure is in. The road is in, the driveways are in, the pads, they're not really pads, but they're in exactly the way they're designed there. So the question really is, is it single-family construction with condominium ownership or is it single-family fee simple? And when it was originally designed by our land planner, it was a new product for us. We had never, you know, never seen this before. They were designed as condominiums, but once we got into looking at it, looking at the actual machinations of trying to set up a condominium regime for eight units, it just became obvious that it was going to be very difficult and very problematic. You've got a very expensive condominium regime that has to be maintained by only eight homeowners. You would have the road, that portion of the road would be private versus public, then you have, that's a maintenance cost that would throw and fall on the homeowners. They would have to have their own individual landscaping contract or be a subcontractor with our, with our overall association landscaping. We have, the HOA will be maintaining all of the lawns in legacy. So we have all of the on-lot landscaping is all done by the HOA. So otherwise, the condominium association would then have to contract with the HOA. They'd have to have a separate HOA for themselves because they don't meet the definition of a lot under the declaration. So this is really, it's not so much about changing what we were gonna build as it was changing the legal mechanism of ownership. So all, the only difference from the left side to the right side are the red property lines. And then you'll see there, the, I guess, blue down at the bottom would be the fence that would be put in. This actually backs up to a common area. There's actually quite a bit of room between there and the nearest house in Woods of Tab, but the adjacent property owner came and asked for that. And we met with the builders here who are here, Barry and Sheila, and they were very graciously agreed to provide that. So, Mr. Southall, maybe answer a couple of your questions. We originally did look at, you know, maybe being as small as a thousand square feet, but from talking to builders, people want to have a little more square footage so they have maybe a guest room or an office or something. So all of these were very carefully designed. We actually worked with Thomas and Wally to come up with these designs. And Sheila and Barry, who are here with Sky Blue Homes, and they're available to answer any questions. What they've done is they've made sure every unit in there will have a downstairs owner's suite. So it does provide for one-story living. It provides for maintenance-free living because all the outside lawn maintenance would be done. But each of these units, they do have two bedrooms and a bath. They're like one and a half-story cottages. So you do have room upstairs, two bedrooms and a bath for when the grandkids come or when, you know, or if you are a small, you know, young family starting out, you have a place for the kids, we have an office. So it really is, I think, is very consistent and they are very consistent with, actually with the architectural design. As you see, it's just a different builder and it is a custom builder as opposed, you know, we did, we did speak with Ryan Homes early on about these, and they just didn't have a product that really fit, that really did what we were trying to do here, which was create a new, different type of product. So it's really, it's more of a consideration of the ultimate cost to the homeowner in terms of the, and the aggravation of who's gonna own it this way by laying down lot lines. You own your own property, you still have dedicated, you have two full-size dedicated spaces in the parking garage, in the parking lots that you see, plus there's the on-site driveways so people can, you know, unload groceries and things like that. So without belaboring, that's what we tried to achieve here. We tried to create a new, unique product that's not in the market. We worked with a custom builder to do that. And we just, it will be just a much, much simpler process for the ultimate homeowner not to have to deal with all these different layers of condominium regimes and associations. So hopefully that answered questions, but I'm happy to answer any...
It does. I do have one other question. All the bedrooms in all the houses on the side?
No. Each one, every one of those models that you saw, they all have a downstairs owner's suite. They all have a downstairs bedroom, and then they have two bedrooms and a bath upstairs that, you know, for guests or children or grandkids or whatever.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Lamont, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a resolution in our packet. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution to approve a master plan amendment for the legacy of Pecoson Plan Development to amend the cottage parcel as shown on the original master plan from condominium fee simple, single-family lots with setbacks on approximately point six-one-seven of one acre of the tax-mapped parcel twenty-seven dash zero-one dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-eight at the legacy development zone, PUD mixed use. That's planned unit development mixed use.
All right, well done. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we're gonna motion bait and second. We adopt that resolution, approving that amendment. Any concerns, comments?
Just a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
From what I see here, this amendment does not affect the form, fit, or function of these units, and it's just affecting the delivery mechanism, they can be sold. So that's my only comment.
Okay.
But it does add the setbacks.
Okay. All right, Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Kim. Let's move on to our third public hearing. It's a master plan amendment request, Legacy Clubhouse. Thomas, you're up again.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The third and final. The request is just as you read. It's an amendment to the master plan for colors shown on the clubhouse. It was properly advertised for in the Daily Press. The clubhouse at Legacy was originally shown, as you see here, red brick. I understand the image is a little distorted, but you see the date on it and scans and emails later. It has, the quality of the image has been a little compromised, but what you can still see is the gables shown are shown as white over red brick. That was the original proposal with the master plan as approved by council in 2015. In the early part of last year, this elevation was shared with staff and reviewed by myself and Wally Horton and the manager. Basically, the same clubhouse, just a little different as far as doors and maybe a little width. But the request was to whitewash the red brick, but all of the gables were still shown as white. When the clubhouse was constructed, you can see the difference. It was constructed with blue gables. So, very short, that is what is before you tonight to approve is that deviation from white as originally approved as council subsequently approved by staff, but now shown as blue very briefly. The reason it was installed as blue was conversations between the developer and their designer. And what I'm showing you here is a little bit of background on that. It's their opinion that the blue will closely match other features of the clubhouse, the pool liner, around the pool area, outdoor furniture, and including furniture found in the clubhouse and in the community activity area. The planning commission recommended approval of the request unanimously at its January meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thomas, I don't really have any questions. What we're talking about is something that originally was supposed to be white and it ended up being blue. And I wrote down and looked at it, you know, I'm not sure why we're even doing this, to be honest with you. I can't imagine the council having a lot of conversation about white and blue. But anyway, any questions to Thomas?
I would, I looked at it, the blue's fine, okay?
Think it looks better.
Okay, good. All right, so we're gonna move ahead with this one, all right? After we get the public hearing out of the way. Is there anyone in, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience that would like to object to this amendment request. I don't see anybody. Anyone that wants to speak in favor of it? You don't need to, that's fine. Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I request a resolution to approve a master plan amendment for the legacy of Pecoson Plan Development to amend the colors on the clubhouse as shown on the master plan at the legacy development zone planned unit development mixed use.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion bait and second. We adopt that resolution and approving that amendment. Any other concerns or comments, any other questions? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Angie?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to a new business. First item, resolution making appointments to the Architectural Review Board. Is there someone with a name?
Yes, I would like to make a resolution appointing Patricia Gillis and Shanda Madriaga to the Architectural Review Board and Timothy O'Tramp II as board attorney.
Okay. All right, we have a motion bait and second. We adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. The second item under new business is resolution authorize the city manager to enter a contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for pickleball tennis court lighting system.
Let Mr. Anderson speak for us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you is the addition of lighting to the city-owned tennis and pickleball courts. At the city council meeting in December, council approved funding for the refurbishment and reconfiguration of the city-owned pickleball and tennis courts, and this included $210,000 in funds for the addition of lighting for these courts. Musco Sports Lighting is the lighting system we use for our city-owned sports fields, and they provided a quote for this project. The light structure system includes LED lighting on four galvanized steel poles with concrete bases. They have an integrated control monitoring system to provide remote on-and-off dimming features. The system includes performance monitoring with 24/7 customer support and 24-hour warranty program that covers materials and onsite labor. And once ordered, there's an eight-to-12-week timeframe for delivery of materials. And once the materials are on site, it'll take two to three weeks to install the lighting system. Musco Sports Lighting has a cooperative purchasing contract through the Sourcewell Joint Purchasing Cooperative and has provided the city a quote based upon that contract in the amount of So we're seeking approval of this contract.
All right, John, well done. Thank you very much. I don't know that we needed a lot of conversation. We've talked a lot about pickleball courts. And we know we're gonna have them, and we know we need lighting for them. And so here's a resolution that will get us there. So, is there someone?
I thought Councilman Fai might wanna do it if he doesn't have it.
If he wants to make the motion, it's fine.
Sure, I'll make the motion. Sir, I move that approve a resolution authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for pickleball slash tennis court lighting system.
All right, we have a motion bait and second. We adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Comments on the city manager?
Yes, sir. I just wanna express my appreciation to HRSD for being here. In my 15 years or so in this capacity, the With Creek Road project that they've been doing ranks number three in terms of overall concerned unhappy calls, in part because of its duration, but it's certainly accelerated recently. And it really is satisfying to no one to say, we empathize because we live here too, but this is not our project. That's not satisfying to anyone, including me, so I'm glad they were here and thank you for that. And I did get handed a note. We had some problems with the audio going out, but we do have it. So we will be preparing a transcript of that entire presentation and be posting that on our website just as soon as we can get that done. And I apologize for anyone that wanted to listen to it live at TV if they didn't get it. I'm not sure at this point the source of that problem, but we'll get the transcript out as quick as we can.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, council, any, Bud?
Yeah, I'll keep it short tonight.
All right.
But I do thank everyone who came here to speak for paying attention to the city government, and I thank people at home for paying attention to the city government. And I thank Steve Robinson for coming up here and talking tonight. I second the comments he made about the city manager and you, Mayor Hassel. And I thank him for including us in those comments. And I hope he listened to our plan that we presented tonight, our contingency plan, because there is a budget there. And we do have the best police force and fire department and rescue squads in the state of Virginia. We've got the best city in the state of Virginia. But I hope you noticed that there's no frills in that budget, okay? There are no frills in the project. And what we're doing there is what we have to do, okay, in order to keep the city running effectively. And I, too, would like to do more for the city employees, okay? We do the best we can, okay? We do not have the commercial income that other cities have, but we do the best with what we have, and we'll continue to do that.
All right, sir. Angie?
All right, thank you. I have two things. I'm going to try to go through them relatively quickly. The first being, I was watching the latest York County Board of Supervisors meeting, and they had a VDOT representative give an update. Three, quickly, there are three Victory Boulevard projects that are going to occur in York County that I think are the import to Pecoson residents. The first being a Victory Boulevard right-turn lane extension, which extends the acceleration lane coming out of Walmart and ties into the right-turn lane that turns into Kiln Creek. Construction is expected early 2025, completion summer of 2025. The second is a smart-scale Victory Boulevard widening between Route 17 and Hampton Highway, which is Route 134. That will be from five lanes to six lanes. So they will be adding an eastbound lane that drops off at Hampton Highway. Construction will begin July 24, complete July 25. And lastly, Victory Boulevard in capacity enhancements between Route 134 and Heaven's Way. Heaven's Way is about halfway between 134 and the Pecoson City Line. This project will be an intersection turn lane and shoulder improvements with a shared use path. Completion is expected 2028. Completion is expected 2028. The second thing, which I think is even more important, is that there was an inaugural issue of the Community Development Newsletter, and that was fantastic. It was great to see, the layout was great, it was informative, and it gave insightful updates about the projects around town. I saw it was placed on the homepage of the city's website in the Pecoson News section along with a public notice about an upcoming Planning Commission meeting. Both of those were really good to see. I just wanted to give my commendation on that for that initiative.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Debbie?
Thank you, Gordon. Have no comment tonight.
Okay. Mr. Debbie?
Yeah, Thomas.
All right.
Keith? Yes, I wanted to thank all the city employees and members of council that came out last Thursday's food pantry distribution. It made things go a lot smoother, I appreciate that. And also, thanks for everyone for the thoughts regarding the passing of my wife's mother. Hey.
I have nothing, Father.
Okay, I just have one thing. I want Tara to tell her daughter, "Happy birthday," and "Thank you for the piece of cake that she sent me." It was ice cream cake, too, and I ate it while I was watching the Super Bowl. Please tell her that for me. All right, anything else?
Well, one thing, Gordon. I mentioned that police department, fire department, rescue squad. I did not leave out, I did leave out, not intentionally, John Anderson's crew, the city maintenance people. They're also the best group in the.
No doubt about it. No doubt about it. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Second. Motion made, and secondly, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we adjourn.